Welcome to our first ever virtual forum. We did practice this an hour ago with the mayor's and now we'll go with the council. This is the Oshkosh City Council Candidates Forum presented by the League of Women Voters of Winnebago County and Oshkosh Media. This event will be simulcast on W O C T one oh one point nine FM radio. The forum may also be accessed via video streaming at Oshkoshmedia.org and on the Oshkosh Media YouTube channel. I am Margie Davy, President of the League and tonight's moderator. The League of Women Voters seeks to inform citizens about major public policy issues and about candidates seeking office. We never support nor oppose any political party or candidate. For more information about the League of Women Voters, you can access our website at L W V Winnebago.org. To learn more about candidates appearing on your ballot, go to vote four one one dot org. In the primary election on February nineteenth, nine candidates are competing for three seats on the city council for a two-year term. There is one incumbent Jake Crowsey. Both Deb Allison Asby and Bob Peschall chose not to run for reelection. Challengers for the three seeds are Michael Beardsley, Phil Collins, Laturia Garrett, Courtney Hanson, Noah Hendricks, Bill Miller, Robert Wilcox, and Erin Wojciechowski. Mr. Wilcox declined our invitation. Mr. Hendricks is unable to attend, but he did submit a written statement. So now I'm going to turn into Noah for a minute and read this statement for him. My name is Noah Hendricks. I am a financial associate at Thrive at Financial in Oshkosh, working for Thrive Ent since May of two thousand and five. I graduated from UW Cross in two thousand and four with a Bachelor of Science degree in marketing. I received my real estate license from the Arizona School of Real Estate and Business in September of two thousand and four. I live on the west side of Oshkosh with my wife Mandy and our two children Finn and Rory. In my spare time, I enjoy spending time with family, traveling, and attending music and sporting events. I obtained my private pilot's license in June of two thousand and fourteen and enjoy flying when time allows. I volunteer annually at E A A's AirVenture Fly-In. I also enjoy serving the community where and when I can. I have been a board member, my current second vice president, for the Oshkosh Boys and Girls Club for three years, a previous board member for the Boys and Girls Club of the Tri-County area in Berlin, and am a current board member and volunteer for the Battle on Bagel Foundation for four years. My motivation to seek election for Oshkosh City Council is my belief in the substantial potential for growth in Oshkosh, both for the citizens and the business owners. I am proud to say that I am from Oshkosh and would like my kids to be able to say the same thing as they grow up here. I believe current and past management has not been as open to growth as some of our neighboring cities have been. I believe Oshkosh can be an excellent destination for people to live or visit. I will bring a fair and honest approach for problem solving. I recognize the community's need for leadership that can meet challenges head-on and can make the tough decisions. Citizens should have a say in how their city is run. As a council member, I would put the citizens' needs and wants before my own agenda. My top priority will be to listen to the concerns of the citizens. Local leaders should be transparent and trustworthy. If goals are set for community growth, there should be a plan in place to reach those goals. I will keep Oshkosh's goals top of mind and the driver of my decisions. I would be a big-picture thinker that would not have a problem proposing a plan to achieve change. Okay, now I'm going to switch back to Margie. You can tell the difference, I'm sure. This virtual forum looks a little different, I know, but it still gives you, the voter, an opportunity to get to know the candidates. Since we have no live audience, we asked for questions to be submitted in advance through email or phone. These questions may have been edited for brevity and clarity. Candidates received only the first two questions in advance. They have not seen any of the other questions. We also encouraged our panelists to provide questions of their own. Joining me on the panel tonight are Karen Schneider of the Oshkosh Herald and Nathaniel Shuda from the Oshkosh Northwestern. Candidates, our timekeeper will give you cues. Please heed the stop sign so I don't have to cut you off. Thank you in advance for keeping your answers concise so that we may cover as many issues as possible. This is not a debate. You will each be given the same amount of time for the same question. At the conclusion of this forum, I will offer you each the opportunity to clarify or rebut something said earlier if you wish to do so. And with that, we'll move on to our opening statements. You will each now have two minutes to summarize your background, qualifications, and your motivation for seeking a seat on the council. And we will start with Michael.
All right, thank you. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
Okay, awesome. Thank you to the league and also the other candidates for showing up tonight and presenting these questions. I'm Michael Beardsley and I have lived in Oshkosh for about nine years now with my wife Megan and dog Coach. I graduated from UW Oshkosh with my bachelor's degree in Business Administration, majoring in Information Systems, which takes me to where I am today as an IT consultant as my day job. I'm also a board member of our Wisconsin Revolution, which has a mission of shaping our governments and economies so that they are working in the best interests of the people. And I'm running because it's important to me that Oshkosh is a city that is sustainable, equitable, and thriving for future generations. So my approach in life, also this campaign, and if I were to be elected to the council, is to be proactive and putting people first to ensure that all our residents are supported, protected, and provided opportunities to live their best life. Local government is incredibly crucial to our day-to-day lives, whether we notice it or not, which is why I believe we need people in charge that will fight for our diverse population. In my run for Congress earlier last year, I demonstrated my willingness to challenge the political status quo in an effort to inspire others to look at the issues we face today through a different lens. And I plan to bring that same resolve to the local level where decisions by the council have intimate impacts on our communities. In an effort to make the city a place that current residents are proud to call home and new residents are excited to lay down their roots, I have a handful of plans that will help take us. Sorry, thirty seconds left. I have a handful of plans that will focus on the future while also being aware of the many pressing issues we see today, like COVID nineteen being the most major. We'll get into those details, I'm sure, during the questions tonight, but on a high level, they resolve around sustainability, equity, and equality, increasing the city collaboration with different entities, and preparing for a future economy. So again, thank you, and I'm Michael Beardsley.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, Phil, we'll let you go next, please.
Thank you for inviting us to this forum. I have a BA in Political Science and a master's in Public Administration. I was in Navy twenty-one years, including eight years in Marine units and six months near Baghdad. When I lived near Chicago eight years ago, I was elected to be a township trustee. The race is nonpartisan. There are six candidates for four seats. And I defeated two incumbents. A reason why I want to run is since I was a kid, I wanted to be elected to office and and serve my community by finding out what the constituents want and doing my best to to serve their needs and want to make sure I keep taxes low and be very transparent about what the city is doing.
Okay, thank you, Phil. We'll go on to you next, Laturia. You have your.
Hi, I'm Laturia Garrett, and you certainly can call me Terry if that's easier. I am asking for your vote in the primary election on February sixteenth. I've been a resident in Oshkosh for twenty-nine years. I am a proud graduate of Oshkosh West High School. I've worked both professionally and through volunteer activities in the community with great organizations like Boys and Girls Club, Salvation Army, and the University of Oshkosh. Some of those activities included really investing in our youth through mock interview workshops, resume writing workshops, supporting freshmen as they moved in, a move-in day at the university, adoptive family programs, and really serving meals for people that needed it. And really, there's a lot more I can say there, but I'll leave it at that. I am married, I've been married sixteen years, to my husband Red. We have three beautiful boys, Armani, Jayavani, and Kaiavani, who we've chosen to raise in this great city. I think Oshkosh is a great place to live, work, and play, and I'd like to really be a part of making it even better. I've been in servant leadership for thirteen years and truly believe in that leadership style. I believe in transparency and openness, equity and inclusion. I believe in having equal opportunity for all. I believe it would be a privilege to be on council. It would be a great responsibility with accountability to and for all of our residents. Again, my name is Laturia Garrett, and I'm asking for your vote on February sixteenth during the primary election. Thank you for having me and thank you guys for tuning in.
Thank you. Okay, next we'll go to you, Courtney.
Hello, my name is Courtney Hanson, and I would like to be on the Oshkosh City Council. I'm twenty-five years old. I was born here in Oshkosh, raised in the town of Algoma, graduated from Oshkosh West, so I'm a wildcat. I also graduated from UW Oshkosh with a bachelor's in Business Administration focusing in Small Business Management. I also graduated with a minor in three D studio art. I love Oshkosh and I believe that we deserve the best. I'm not coming out here with some kind of agenda. All I want to do for us is to come to the meetings prepared to act, prepared to speak, and prepared to listen. That's what our city needs. We need change. We need progression. As one of the former candidates had said, the other surrounding cities, they've moved forward so much growth, and I feel like we've been stagnant, and I would like to be a change in that. I live in Oshkosh, two blocks away from Romney Park, with my two dogs, my boyfriend, and we love the area. We love kayaking. We love hiking. Everything about Oshkosh is great. I'm not leaving anytime soon. And I believe that we should just keep on moving forward and making everything as best as it can be. My name is Courtney Hanson, and I'd like to be on your city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Courtney. Jake, you're next.
Start it again. Just wanted to say hi, everybody in the virtual world tonight of Oshkosh. First off, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters of Winnebago County for putting this virtual forum together and giving us a platform to share a little about ourselves to the community. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Jake Crowsey, and I'm the current deputy mayor of the city of Oshkosh. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to share a little about myself and my beliefs about the city tonight. I also want to welcome the other candidates as well. This year's slate of candidates, in my opinion, is the most adverse group I've been a part of, which is great news for the people of Oshkosh. It's a win-win, no matter who gets elected. For those of you that do know me, thank you for all the support over the past four years to gain your trust and serve you in our community. I'm a twenty-year resident of Oshkosh. I'm originally from Berlin. I'm a member of the UAW workforce at Oshkosh Defense for nearly seventeen years now. I'm married with three kids, Joslyn, she's three, Jagger, he's eight, and Jackson, he's ten. All of them try to get into these meetings when I'm on TV at home, so tonight I'm at a quiet, different place. I decided to run for a third term on the city council because I feel like I still have fresh ideas and bring an everyday Oshkosh citizen perspective to the table. During my time on council, I've served as a representative to the various boards and commissions, including Long Range Finance, Traffic and Parking, Sustainability Advisory Board, and the Landmarks Commission. I was also voted in by my peers on the current city council this past year as the city's deputy mayor. It was an honor to be selected for this role by my fellow council members gaining their trust over the last four years. I feel that Oshkosh has a bright future, and its best days are still ahead. I'm asking for your support to help get us there together. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. We'll move on to you now, Bill.
First of all, thank you all for being here and certainly thank you to the league. You guys do an amazing job as always to get this information out to the community, and I think we all appreciate it. I'm a lifelong resident, born and raised here, president of a local telecommunications company for the last twenty-nine years, previous councilman. And I've served on several nonprofit boards and committees throughout the years here in the city. And we certainly live in the best city in the state of Wisconsin. And I'd just like to echo what Jake said. I think we've got an amazing group of candidates, very diversified. I think one and all will serve the community very, very well. My hot buttons, I think, are mostly economic development for our community and certainly tourism. We've suffered a lot through this tragic year, and I think our focus needs to bring some of those tourism dollars back to our community to help our small businesses. Definitely my focus is there. I've got an amazing family here. I'm the proud father of three daughters, Megan, Claire, and Katie. I don't want to go into any details. They hate that their father's trying to be a politician, so I'll leave them out of it. But it's a real honor to be here, and it's been a real honor to serve on the council in the past. So again, thank you one and all. I look forward to this election.
Thank you, Bill. And last but not least, we have Erin.
Thank you so much. Thank you to the league for hosting this. Thank you to the fellow candidates and for everyone who's tuning in and the media for covering this because we know how important it is for local media to be covering things like this because local government is the most important, in my opinion. My name is Erin Wojciechowski. I will say that again, Wojciechowski, because it is a mouthful. I live in Oshkosh, and my cat is trying to interrupt, so one of the perks of doing Zoom calls. But I'm running for the Oshkosh City Council, hoping to earn your vote. I have lived in Oshkosh since two thousand and fifteen, and you know, immediately from moving here, I got involved as soon as I could. I graduated recently from UW Oshkosh with degrees in Political Science and Economics. And as soon as moving here, I ran for the Winnebago County Board of Supervisors in two thousand and sixteen, where I beat the incumbent who was running for reelection. It was an honor to serve in that capacity, and then I ran again in two thousand and eighteen unopposed to serve another two years. And in those four years serving on the county board, I served on the Information Systems Committee as the chair and as the secretary and the Legislative Committee representing my IS committee. In addition to that, I did run for the state senate and got a little bit of an experience learning about the state issues that also affect the local level. So really, why I'm running for this position is because we are in an unprecedented time with coronavirus and every other issue that is facing us, and I believe that we need leaders in the city council who have experience, who have knowledge, and who know what to be doing on day one. I'm also running because I don't see diversity in our city reflected in our city council. I think it's time for some diverse perspectives and some inclusive measures in our city council. So I'm hoping to have a robust discussion about the issues I care about and the issues you all care about. And just thank you for being here. Once again, Erin Wojciechowski.
Thank you. Okay, then we will move on to our next question that you were also given in advance. I will call your names in different orders, you know, because we're kind of in this Brady Bunch look, you know, or Hollywood Squares or whatever. I'm going to go by my screen, so you're really not going to know where you're going to come up because it changes. The next question is, you have two minutes to share your to-do list, what your policy priorities for the city of Oshkosh are, and tell us why, please. And this time, let's start with you, Courtney.
Well, like I said earlier, I don't really have a to-do list. What it is to me from being on city council is coming to the meetings prepared. That means doing all of my homework prior to showing up, knowing what's going to be on the docket for the day, responding to every email that comes, and being respectful of the time of my peers and everyone else involved, including city staff. We're trying to keep politics out of city government, and I believe that there's no room for politics in our local government area. They just slow things down. They make things worse. Nothing gets done, and like I said, things have been stagnant because of them. And we can see that in general when we're looking at pretty much any government standpoint. I just would like to make Oshkosh a better city. Thank you.
Thank you, Courtney. Let's go to you, Phil.
My priorities is ensuring that the city will not increase anyone's property tax bill because some people are already struggling financially because of the coronavirus. If I win after each meeting, I want to type a summary of the meeting on my Facebook page to make sure residents are well-informed very quickly about what happened in the meeting. On the website, there are minutes of the meetings, but that might take a few days. I want to do it very quickly. If the the city can have an ordinance about whether businesses will require masks, I would only vote on that if I do a survey of a lot of business owners and make sure I get their views about it first.
Okay, thank you, Phil. Let's move on to Erin.
Thank you for that question. So I don't have, you know, a to-do list set out, but I do have goals of things that I think we need as a city council, as a community, to accomplish. And the two biggest issues that I see the council having to take up is a response and recovery plan to coronavirus and how we're going to manage the budget when budget time comes. You know, every year on the county board, we would take up a budget worth, you know, a hundred million dollars. It was a big budget. And we went page to page, department by department, to make sure that we were spending taxpayer dollars wisely and that we were investing in programs that mattered. So I'm going to take that same approach. I'm going to make sure that we are using our tax dollars wisely, investing them into the programs that people care about that are actually working, and obviously trying to cut waste where we can because I think that is also important. We're going to be left with sort of a budget shortfall, given how closed our economy has been and the disastrous effects from COVID. So what that means is working together with our county board and our school board. I was pleased to see that they had a joint meeting not too long ago with the school board, and I want to see that continue to go forward until we are in a position where we feel comfortable reopening up our businesses and our economy and reopening up our schools. And that's also going to take working with our state and federal, you know, partners to make sure that we're leading a coordinated effort that is focusing on safety, equity, and getting our economy back up. So those are the two big things, but in addition to that, I really want to take a look at criminal justice reform, marijuana decriminalization, decriminalizing homelessness, making sure that we're pushing sustainability efforts, whether it's in new projects and our infrastructure, and in addition to infrastructure, making sure that we're keeping our roads up to date and in good shape. So that's just a few of the issues, and I know when we get into these debates, it really counts into the nitty-gritty and the details. And I'm a detail nerd and a policy nerd, and those are things that I will look for and things I care about. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Okay, let's move on to Bill.
Thanks, Margie. Sorry, I had a little problem there on muting myself, but thank you. My basic concern, and I think some others have echoed this, we're going to have a real challenge with the budgets coming up here, just based on the loss of revenue. And certainly, the state constantly squeezing our shared revenue. It's abysmal what the state has done to small communities like ourselves with the shared revenue. So there are going to be some real challenges come budget time, tightening the bell, trying to make things work. And again, just to sound redundant, but economic development's got to be to the forefront. We've got over six hundred great employees here in the city. They're, and no fault of their own, but they're spending the taxpayers' money, and we've only got two or three in economic development making money for the city. So I'd like to see a real emphasis on Alan Davis's group, their Economic Development for the Community, focus on some TIPS, some microloans for minorities to get businesses started, things like that, really enhance the community, get those wages up, recruit those companies, start communities that do have high-paying wages. Really, that's my focus. I don't think that's ever been a secret. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, Laturia.
I would say I would be welcoming and taking an appreciative approach to anything and everything that was presented. I would make sure that I did my due diligence and made informed decisions with my other council members. Specifically, things that I think are goals for me, like everyone else said, I think we're going to have some struggles, and we need to have a really good plan as to how we come out regarding economic growth and sustainability for both residents and local businesses. I would take the approach of what can we do and not focus on what's happened, but really move forward. I think also creating unique ways of listening to residents, making sure that we're proactive and seeking input and feedback from them, and really listening to hear versus listening to respond. And last but certainly not least, I would have a laser-like focus really on continuing the great start that the community and the city's already had in respect to equity and inclusion and making sure that we really dig in and get into some actionable items and move from the planning stage, because I really think that will create a greater sense of community for all of us who call Oshkosh home. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Michael.
Okay, thank you. So like I mentioned in my intro, most of my top priorities are their future focus for the city. That is, sorry, it's making sure their future focus so that the city is prepared for the issues ahead. But I also want to be aware of the many current issues we face today, and so it's important that we put the COVID nineteen plan front and center. And of course, being pragmatic with the budget, reducing expenditures where we can because that is a constant hot spot, and especially this coming up year, as a lot of others have echoed. As for bigger picture goals, I will lead the effort for environmental sustainability by having the city commit to a hundred percent renewable energy usage by two thousand and fifty. I would love to increase solar panel usage on city property and also incentivize private ownership of solar panels. I will also take an aggressive approach to conserving our waterways and green spaces and also partner with the Chamber of Commerce to work to attract new green businesses for preparation of a more future economy. I also would love to increase the amount of green spaces. There have been endless studies that show the happiest communities really around the globe have the most green spaces. And we all know Oshkosh is very lucky to have some great parks and natural resources. So I think it'd be best if we have residents able to enjoy that more. I'll also work to remove fines and decriminalize homelessness and simple marijuana possession. And I will push to have the city increase investment in their early education. This one, I think, is very important. There is already a large network of cities nationwide that have implemented universal pre-K programs, and studies show that thirty percent of families struggle to afford early education for the children. And then with that, that burden disproportionately falls onto the mother to make that work. And we all know every three- and four-year-old only has one opportunity to that quality education, and if they don't get it, that leads to more issues down the line, not only for themselves, but for the community at large. So I will explore providing funding for that, starting So I will explore providing funding for that, starting with low income households to start with a vision of making that program universal in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Jake, it must be your turn.
Yep, thank you. We always talk about the budget as that's the, the main purpose of running a city. But I look at the city and a council member as a people business. If we take care of the people, everything else falls into place, it seems like to me. So my, my focus is our current pressing issues in the city around the state. We face as a city that we need to work on together. The main one I think is COVID recovery, both socially and economically. As a community, we are all suffering at the unnecessary loss of life, some families destroyed forever. The hardships put on families financially and emotionally, making the hard decisions balancing children at home because of schools being closed and still having to provide financially at home. The business community has struggled as well. Small business owners have seen their hard work vanish in many cases over the last year. As a city council, we need to continue to support the people that need the help the most with any tool we have at our disposal. Another issue that is a growing one of great concern in Oshkosh, as is any city of our size, is the expanding homelessness. Population that also calls Oshkosh home, but are not lucky enough to experience the life most of us have. As a council, we need to engage the city into further action on creating more opportunities to support and help these individuals, in some cases, these families. If that's micro homes or simply easier access to a warm bed at night, that's what we need to do as a priority going into twenty twenty-one and beyond. There are many other issues to work on, and in some cases, progress is slow, but together we can handle them. We all call Oshkosh home. Anything is possible if we work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. Okay, now we're going to move into the portion of our forum where we ask questions that you have not seen before. These were submitted through our website, through our email or the panelists wrote them. They will start asking you questions. You will have one minute for each question. Either Karen or Nathaniel will ask you a question and then I will call on you. And again, this is going to be mixed up a little bit, just so somebody doesn't end up always being first or last. This is a large field tonight, so if you can keep your answers concise, we want you to give a full answer. But we also have time restraints for the number of issues we'd like to cover, so please keep that in mind. And with that, I'm going to ask Nathaniel to ask the first question, please.
Thank you, Margie. One, one of the things that I'm sure nobody here is surprised that, that I'm going to ask about is something that's been on the top of everyone's minds for the past ten months. And that's been, that's been the coronavirus pandemic. Right here in Oshkosh, the councils had taken steps to deal with the virus, including declaring a state of emergency, closing city hall to the public as, as part of that, and moving public meetings online. Leaders of other communities, including Oshkosh, have also been encouraging the public to take, to take precautions and those types of things. But as, as, as other communities have shown, say, like Green Bay and Madison, leaders have, have taken further steps to issue mandates or orders, those types of things. In fact, right here in Winnebago County, officials took the controversial step to give public health officials more authority to enforce those types of orders. So my question is, what role should the city play and what role specifically should the city council play in responding to the pandemic? And how does, as a result of that, how does, how does there, how do you create that balance between public health and concerns that some have raised about the rights of individuals and businesses? And I'm just going to go ahead with the order that you guys show up on my screen, so let's start with Courtney.
All right, so I believe that as city council responding to the coronavirus pandemic, we should be taking all aspects into account. Businesses, there needs to be commerce coming in and out of the city. Restaurants are struggling right now. And what we can do is we can keep a limit on how many people capacity there can be in a place. But we can't shut things down. I understand that it might help, you know, in the short run. But when things get shut down, there's a boom and it's just a constant cycle. I believe that we need to work with business owners to get through it. Thank you.
Sounds good. Aaron.
Thank you for that question. So, you know, I believe the role of the city council or any local government during a public health crisis is to be leading by example and to be encouraging, you know, its citizens to do what's best for its community. And that's wearing a mask, socially distancing, you know, avoiding unnecessary trips out, you know, when you don't have to. If you see, if you're going out to dinner or to, you know, a bar and it's packed, probably a good idea not to go in there. You know, we need to look at this kind of as a cultural aspect of, you know, emphasizing public health and, you know, public safety. And where the roles of businesses play in this is we need to invite them into the discussion. And that's like why I said earlier, we need to have a full-on discussion with all our stakeholders. Being with the county board, city council, business leaders, education leaders and public health leaders. Because we're not going to make these decisions, you know, unilaterally. We need to do it together as a community. And I think you'd be surprised at how many people will agree that we need to make these tough calls. Obviously, we shouldn't be shutting down businesses. And thank God that we have a vaccine out. We just need to make sure that we have a plan in place to get that vaccine out to those who want to take it as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Michael next.
Thank you. So I guess first and foremost, I'm not a health expert. So one of my roles on the council would be to make sure we're putting experts in charge to make these decisions or at least advise the council on what decisions to make. And I guess generally, I feel like municipalities have, have been left off the dry during this by state and federal governments with all the gridlock going on and not a lot of aid coming our way. So it's made it a lose-lose situations for whatever cities decide to do. And I think cities can only do so much, and I believe the council has done, they've already done what I would have done in fighting the pandemic, fighting the pandemic. Aaron mentioned leaning by example, so I'm happy that everything moved virtual. City council kind of shut down, but I don't think there's any other steps council should have made at this point besides continuing to work with the, with the county to make sure that we're following guidelines and promoting, promoting the guidelines as best as we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Phil, same question.
I agree with what the the council already did because the virus, having meetings online and requiring people to wear masks when they go into the city building. I, I think we should listen, like, city has been to recommendations of the, the county government because the county government has a bigger health department with more experts in the, as subjects. And if they know about a high incidence of the, the virus in Winnebago County. And they have recommendations that we should do what they suggest about asking people to, to wear masks and be socially distant, as long as experts recommend that.
Thank you. Bill, go ahead.
Thank you. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the council. These are, these are very tumultuous times. I, I think they did the best they could under the circumstances. I, I certainly don't envy any of them to have to go through that. My, my feeling on, on how city government should play a role in this is, is walk cautiously. Excuse me, it's, it's, it's a very divisive issue. Obviously, you want to do what's best from, from a health aspect, but you don't want to get in the business of picking winners and losers. And I think our, our state and our county government chose to go down those paths. The city didn't. But it, it, it's, it, it, these are very challenging times. Small businesses are struggling. People can't put food on the family table. And I think our, our city council did walk cautiously, so I, I just want to thank them. I, I think they did everything they possibly could under the circumstances, and I don't know if I would have done anything different. So I applaud them. Thank you for your question.
You're welcome. Jake.
Thank you for the question. This has been one of the biggest issues that we've had to deal with in a long time. When I first got elected to the council, I didn't think we'd be dealing with pandemics and stuff like that. I thought it'd be more local level stuff. But as a leader, you got to take the issues on as they come, and you got to be an example for your community, how you should act. As someone said, as an elected official, you're not an expert in science. The science has to lead us in that direction of a decision. If the masking is helpful five or ten percent, it's, it's better than not wearing one. So science says you should wear one. It's become a political issue on the left and the right where that's unfortunate. Should the, the politicians should have just been quiet and listened to science. Milwaukee was the first city to act. We were going to act on this on a Tuesday night. Evers announced a mask mandate on Monday, so we were going to be the second or third city to act on this. So we're at where we're at right now, and hopefully with the vaccine coming, we can be off to a good, fresh start.
Thank you. And finally, Leteria.
Thank you so much. I would say that I wouldn't have done anything differently because there's no reference, right? This is something that we never imagined. We had no experience. And so it's for them to roll up their sleeves and just take action, making best case choices, leaning into the experts. I think that they did a phenomenal job with that. I think making sure that we're still working with local businesses and asking the question, what can we do? I think there were some great things that came out of that, like curbside and things of that nature. So I, I again think that the job they did with the situation that they had was well done. Thank you for your question.
Okay, thank you all for your answers. And now we'll ask Karen to ask her first question, please.
Great, thank you, Margie. So I'm going to bring it a little more back home here. And there's been different conversations going on regarding the form of city government that we do have. So do you support the council manager form of government that Oshkosh currently has? Do you support our current at-large election of city council members, which you are now running for one of those seats? And please tell me why or why not. And I'm going to go ahead and mute myself and let Margie go through the queue of candidates. Thank you.
Okay, we'll start with you, Bill.
Thank you, Karen, and thank you, Margie. I, I do support the at-large very strongly. I, I think all of us need to, to be on board with supporting our entire community. Districting just creates rifts and, and politics and, and things like that. So I, I, I do think the at-large position is the best way to go. Certainly for here in Oshkosh, I would like to see us change from the mayoral election and go to a council president that would rotate every year or two years. That would be the only thing I would like to change. Just takes more politics out of it. And gets us all on the same page, gets all the ships sailing in the same direction. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. We'll go to you, Aaron.
I think this is a very fascinating question and one that you would have a really long debate about, especially if you're a political scientist. I really don't have an opinion either way. If you look at at-large or district, they each have their own pros and cons. Interestingly enough, our at-large districts here in Oshkosh are larger than our assembly district, which is interesting when you think about that. The dynamic between the two. So, you know, I think there are, there are advantages to having at-large and there are advantages to having districts. So I can't really, you know, say which one I like either way, because I've only ever lived in an at-large or been involved in politics and government where it was at-large. I do think the way we have it now is working, but you know, I'm always open to changing things up.
Thank you, Aaron. Michael, what are your thoughts?
Thank you. To start with the at-large portion of the question, I'm kind of echoing a lot of thoughts here. I don't mind the current model. I, in general, would support a larger council. If you're looking at Appleton, they have, I believe, over fifteen council members, although they are district-based. I think we, with a similar population, we should be closer to that number. I think six is a bit low or seven if you count the mayor. So I support more of a model that's at-large and district. I think that would be a, a best of both worlds kind of in between there. But it's one of those that's working for the city. So if we could increase it, that'd be great. With the city manager question, that's also one that I'm a little skeptical about. I think it's, I think it's working well, but I think that there's some things we can look at to change there. I would not be opposed to moving to more of the, what I'll call traditional mayoral structure that a lot of other cities have. Oshkosh is a little unique with the city manager, so I would not oppose that. But again, it is working well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, Phil, your thoughts?
I think that it's okay to have the council, mayor, city manager, just the way it is now, because I haven't seen any problems with it. And also think I agree with our, our running at-large because that means that all the council members would try to help everyone in the city instead of just people in a, a certain area. So I think that should stay the way it is also.
Okay, thank you. Leteria.
I would say I'm in alignment with the at-large structure. I would echo Michael in respect to, I think, the more council members we had, the more opportunities we would have from, you know, larger perspective. As far as the city manager role, honestly, I would have to say I don't know a huge amount about what his role really is. But from what I see, living and working and raising my children here, it is working. I would love to get involved more and really understand how and what his interaction or engagement is with the actual city council members. Thank you.
Thank you, Courtney.
And I'm just gonna echo as well. I believe that the at-large is a very good thing for Oshkosh. I don't think we're a big enough city with many different areas that we would need district by district. However, I do also agree that we do need more councilmen on the board. Like it was brought up, we're close in size to Appleton. Not in spatial size, so that's why I'm staying, stay with at-large rather than district. But adding more people in, coming from various backgrounds and different sides, that would definitely help bring more cohesiveness to Oshkosh and different thoughts on how people see it.
Okay, thank you. Jake?
Thank you. I'm a fan of our current city government. I think it's important to have a professional, college-educated in their field leader. We're the eighth biggest city in the state, so there's a lot of responsibilities, a large workforce for the city to oversee. Oftentimes, elected mayors in cities of similar size or bigger have a political agenda where they worry about getting reelected. In our council, it's a part-time council. Nobody should really worry about financially the benefits of getting elected or not elected. When I first ran four years ago, I didn't even know there was a salary until the primary election came up. I think with at-large, there's problems. People, council members care about their district and it's an individual goal sometimes where if we're all in it together citywide, I think a lot more can be done if we're all looking at it together. I think a lot more can be done if we're all looking at it together. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. Okay, Nathaniel, let's have another question from you, please.
Okay, sorry, I've got multiple.
All the choices.
Yeah. Another thing that I wanted to touch on is something that several people have already mentioned in their opening statements and things like that. And that is, there's, there's kind of been a focus here the past few years about making Oshkosh a more diverse, inclusive, and welcoming place for everyone. Whether you're from Oshkosh originally, whether you're new to Oshkosh, whether you know, your, your family's been here for generations, whether, whether you're, you know, like I said, whether you're just, just moved here. What have you. And, and so I guess my question would be, how, how has the city been doing in this area? And what areas are there for improvement?
Okay, well, let's start this time with Leteria.
I would say the city has done a lot better. Like I said in my opening statement, I've been here 29 years. So there's definitely been incremental growth in that area. And I'm very proud of that growth. But there's a lot more work to do. Being honest, there's just some things that we need to do from an actionable standpoint. I think accountability needs to be something that's focused on. It's one thing to, to really talk about it, but to hold people accountable to what we're expecting our community to look like, what it's expected to be like when someone new, whether it's a mental disability, physical disability, or a person of color, any kind of minority group. I think we have to challenge and start with our hearts as far as how we interact with people, how we engage with people, and ensure that everyone just feels like they're empowered to be the best person that they can be. Thank you.
Thank you. Jake, your thoughts, please?
Thank you. If you look on Facebook at, like the, you know, you're from Oshkosh when, from like 1980, obviously the cities came a long way downtown. There's been a lot more growth. We're not, Appleton's downtown, but we have goals to shoot for. I'm interested as a council member to try to get revitalized the downtown and downtown city housing, change rentals into homes. Have incentives for homeowners to buy rentals and change them back to one families. Incentives to start small businesses downtown. I'm a fan of TIFs for larger businesses. But at the same time, TIFs don't do a whole lot for small-town little businesses. And I'd like to see the city get more involved with helping out just mom and pop shops. So that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you. Erin?
Thank you for that question. This is a very important topic to me. You know, I think we have made progress in these recent few years. And I think that's a result of electing people who, you know, have a desire and the will to make that change and not just, you know, speak in platitudes, who want to take real action. And I think, like I said in my opening remarks, I don't see myself and a lot of people don't see their diversity reflected in our city council. And it takes people having those diverse experiences and those lived experiences to have those tough conversations. And I can say from experience, when I was on the county board, I was able to pass a resolution that extended protections to gender identity and gender expression. And that seemed small, but it was a big deal for people who, you know, don't identify under, you know, who identify differently. For LGBTQ community, we need to be having these conversations. We need to be having these tough conversations and make some action, make some progress. I think we need a diversity coordinator in Oshkosh so we can really get the ball rolling on these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Michael.
All right, thank you. And I'll start out with, I would also support a diversity coordinator at the city level. And I think in general, the key here is obviously diversity. So, and I mean diversity in our businesses. So providing incentives for the downtown district to continue to grow and evolve. And I think kind of the key to my whole answer here is, I think these new districts, like the Sodas District and these new large projects are going to be what brings new people here and makes them stay. And of course, making sure those opportunities and those, those projects that are coming in are, are different in their own right. You could look at the Menominee Nation Arena. That is, that was a huge kind of cornerstone to that part of the city that was empty before and bringing a new type of crowd in. And that, that'll stay there and that likes those type of things and provides new opportunities. So I think if we keep taking on projects like that and keep, keep evolving, that'll, that'll help out the issue. Thank you.
Okay, Phil.
I think our city is very diverse now. I go to City Hall and many large businesses, I see a lot of employees of that many different ages and ethnic groups. Maybe the, the city could improve that a little. On the city government website, it mentions loans for businesses. Either it could say that we encourage people have made a different demographic groups to apply because I don't discriminate and like to welcome people who made groups in the community, especially to open businesses.
Thank you. Courtney?
So something that I've noticed about Oshkosh is that people come here to go to school, people graduate, and then they leave. That's the case for most of people in my class. And being from Oshkosh, I'm going to stay here. And the gap that I can see is that I know that the city of Oshkosh and UW-Oshkosh are cohesive in some points. But I feel that businesses and UW-Oshkosh need to also be integrated just a little bit, or at least aware of each other. As of right now, UW-Oshkosh has a ton of volunteer efforts that have no correlation to the city, but they do things for the city, like their cleanup days. If we could incentivize more things like that to get more of the demographic of the younger people involved, I feel like that would retain them and stay to the city with us rather than just coming here, graduating, leaving. That would be a way to bring up economy, bring up the businesses and just help us as a whole.
Okay, thank you. And Bill?
Thank you. Speaking globally about inclusiveness here in Oshkosh, I think it's a real testament to the community and to the council that, that the fact that we discuss it regularly, we're in the past, and I'm talking years ago in the past, it was, it was a hot topic and then it would disappear. This, this inclusiveness is, is here to stay, which is an amazing thing. And it's, it's a challenge for, for a city like Oshkosh. You know, we've got a minority population of less than 8%. It, it's an incredibly white community and my minority relatives that visit here regularly from Minneapolis remind me all the time, it's a very white community. But I, I think the city, the citizens, the council, everybody's making great strides, making this city look like the, the way it should. So this inclusiveness is, is here to stay. And I, I think everybody here that's talking about it will move the ball forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Karen, do you have another question for our candidates?
I do. And it's been brought up in several answers. So talking about economic development and growing businesses. So what I'm curious to know is, would you support adding sustainability factors to the checklist for each capital improvement project in the city?
Okay, let's start with Courtney.
All right. I believe that sustainability is a big deal that should be incorporated in every business decision. Sustainability helps the planet. It helps businesses stay slim. It helps everything across the board. If we are able to incorporate more green efforts into our business, that can change how we incorporate it into our society and put us at the forefront of how things are going. Right now, I still see garbage trucks picking up recycling cans. And I know that that's environmental. But at the same point, they all, like, it all, it all starts somewhere. And we need to put efforts forward in businesses and homes and every project forward for sustainability and to help out our environment.
Thank you. Bill, what are your thoughts?
Thank you. Sustainability is incredibly important. As a business owner, as an employer, it, it's, 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 it's everything right now. And you can see it in the, in the nonprofit boards I sit on. These, these conversations are happening, happening daily. So sustainability for, for the city and in its planning is paramount. So I support all sustainability efforts across the board. It's just common sense and it's good for everybody.
Thank you. Let's go to you, Phil.
I agree with more sustainability if it doesn't cost the city government any more money unless the city can find ways to decrease spending in other areas if a sustainability project would increase or spending.
Okay, thank you. Leteria?
I would say yes, I would support it. I think the green piece of it would also help with things like global warming. And I think there would be dollars that could be saved by going that route. I also think about just making sure that, you know, we have a city, right? Inevitably, at some point, if we aren't doing things effectively, there's a concern there as well. As far as the actual board, I have not been able to really be a part of those meetings or watch the recording of those meetings. So I'd definitely be really interested and have a great willingness to learn more about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Jake?
Thank you. That's a great question. Adding sustainability planning to decisions on new developments. We already have a scoring metric in our TIF, our TIF agreements and our, our structure of what we've come up with as guidelines to follow as a city. I wish we had a larger scoring basis for that portion. It's lower down on the chart, so it's obviously something to work on. We ask for developers to have green areas instead of concrete. We ask for less parking, more trees. Long-term sustainability plans usually save communities money. So in the long haul, spending a little more now will help save communities on their budgets and it'll help the environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. Okay, Erin?
Thank you for this question. Sustainability is incredibly important. And there's so many different facets where we can make progress on this. You know, as, as small as the departmental level, when I served as Chair of the IS Committee for the county, my focus was trying to reduce our waste while improving sustainability. And that was something as simple as cutting down how much paper we printed and how much postage we used. And that was a couple thousand dollars every year that we were spending, actually, sorry, every month that we were spending when we had iPads. So it's little things like that that we can cut back on that save money while also being more sustainable. But it also is bigger on the larger scale of, I'd like to see environmental impact statements on every project and any project that, where it's applicable to make sure that it's not having a negative impact on our water, on our ground, and on our city. I also see this as a great opportunity to collaborate with our neighborhood associations, whether it's doing community gardens or cleanup days and with our UW-Oshkosh, which is nationally recognized as a sustainable campus. They've been doing some great stuff, so we should work with them.
Okay, thank you. And Michael?
Thank you for this question. This is one of my favorite questions because it's a big yes for me. I think we need to have measures in place now to ensure that we're gradually growing more sustainable with each new development in the city, whether it's a public or private development, while also working on retrofitting older structures, which of course, Oshkosh has a lot of those. I would require, or I would want to require, green-focused building practices for, for new construction and also the use of green materials for new efforts. I would also want environmental impact reports being done and available to the public. And I could go on a lot about sustainability. So just to wrap this question up, for what I've seen from the city's Sustainability Advisory Board, they are providing a lot of recommendations. So I would like my role on the council to be one to kind of usher those into reality. So, thank you.
Thank you, Michael. I'm going to ask a follow-up to this question, sort of. What do you think, what, what policy should Oshkosh government implement to deal with the upcoming effects of climate change? This is a little bit different take on that. So with this, let's start with Jake.
Thank you. One of the things we're looking at, at the city level right now, and we've added hybrid buses. It's cut down on fuel costs. We've done studies on replacing our vehicles at the city level, if it's a small fire department car or up to the police cruisers or the fire trucks themselves. And in the future, we hope to make it all-electric or hybrid form instead of gasoline. Because obviously, long-term, it's about the environment and saving and getting away from fossil fuels. So I would say that would be a big one that we could look at. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jake. And I'm just going to expound on this a little bit because I realized maybe I didn't ask it in a way that's getting to the point I want. We've had a lot of weather changes across the world recently. It's causing differences in our environment here. We've, we've gone to a different level of zoning as far as what zone are you in to grow your pumpkins or, you know, whatever. Our, our water is different, our weather is different. What, what sort of resilience would you put in place in Oshkosh to help Oshkosh weather the storm, quite literally, to help us be more resilient? And Jake, I will come back to you at the end if you have anything you would like. Now, now that I've made that clarification and that one's on me. Let's go to Bill.
Thanks, Margie. The answer is probably just as tough as, as you getting the question out there clearly. I think we gotta listen to the experts and constantly keep our minds open. I, I think the ball keeps moving here all the time. Certainly, our sustainability board does a, does an amazing job. And taking, taking their knowledge and expertise and actually turning it into policy at, at the city is, is probably the easiest way to tackle those, those challenges. And it, it, it's a very, it's a very difficult process. And it's going to take some time to get everybody moving in that direction. But we can certainly do it. And again, I, I think our sustainability board does, does an amazing job in, in counseling us, the, the, the city council, and giving us advice. And we need to take that advice, run with it, and implement policy based on that. Thank you very much, Margie.
Thank you, Bill. Erin, what are your thoughts?
Thank you. You know, I think this comes down to what I mentioned is collaboration because we can't do this all alone. You know, we are part of, part of a county. We have neighboring counties and cities, you know, that share these lands and these waterways with us that we need to work with. We need to have, you know, a coordinated effort, whether it is protecting the watershed, keeping Lake Winnebago clean because we do live, we do live right next to it, and it's the largest lake in Wisconsin. Whether it's protecting our wetlands and making sure that when flooding happens, that it's not, you know, destroying our infrastructure or communities. There, there is a lot we can do, and we have a lot of recommendations out there. And as Michael said, you know, my role in that would be taking up those recommendations and trying to implement them because recommendations only get us so far. We need to take some action on this.
Thank you. Courtney.
Thank you very much for this question. I believe that focusing on renewable resources is one of our biggest points that we could be working towards. Currently, obviously, fossil fuels are still in use. I know that a lot of other cities, and I don't know if we do exactly, but use propane in their cop cars and more service vehicles for the city. And I know that we've got a lot of snowplows, and it might not be exactly feasible to go completely green, but I know we can work harder on that. Also, something would be looking at other countries and what they've done. Countries in Europe are completely green, and I know solar farms would be a possibility. We've got a lot of buildings here, and putting a few solar panels up on top of each building or turning those into gardens, lowering the temperature of the city, it would help a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Leteria.
So the last part of what Courtney just said was what I was thinking about is, as far as kind of stealing shamelessly from other countries and areas that's done it well. I think that's what I would be looking to do. I would be working with the experts and doing a lot of research before I knew exactly what the plan was. But I think definitely looking at what, what others have done would be our best course of action for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Phil.
I agree with what other people said about getting recommendations from other governments. Get suggestions from Winnebago County Government and the governments of counties that border our county. Since their weather is close to ours and the soil for farmland is probably similar to ours. I should also get recommendations from the Wisconsin government and insert the suggestions of all those people to make our decisions.
Okay, thank you. And Michael?
Thank you. So I only have 60 seconds, so I'm going to do a shameless plug that if, I'm going to touch on a few things here, but I have a lot more on my website listed out. So I'll try to touch on some other things I didn't talk about in my intro or other questions. So the first thing here, this one, what we have to work with the county on, but a lot of cities or counties have leased airport space, the empty grass in the airport to make solar farms there. Otherwise, that's just space that's not being utilized for anything. I would love to see a Fox Valley or Northeastern Region Climate Table with elected officials from county, city governments throughout the valley to kind of increase our negotiation and purchasing power for, you know, whether we want to lobby the state for certain things or purchase bulk solar panels or, or things like that. Having a unified approach in our region would be, would be great. I've mentioned converting abandoned city space to green spaces. I think Margie touched on the flood issues here where Oshkosh is sandwiched between the lake and the river. So I would love to see a flood resilience plan as well to, to make sure that we're not getting worse in that aspect. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think that we have time for one more question, and I think that's going to fall to you, Nathaniel.
Okay. One of the other things that I wanted to ask about is also kind of tied to a national issue, but I want to bring it, bring it back to a local level as well because there's been certainly some discussions here in, in locally on this topic as well. In, in 2020, there was a, a big issue around the country and here locally on racial justice and police reform. Obviously, with protests around the country, but also here in Oshkosh, where people called for change right here in our own community. There's been discussions about how, how, how to reform, how laws are enforced, and as well as how police interact with the community. And Oshkosh has, has been using a model of community policing for several years now. In fact, yesterday, the, the council met with the, the school board to talk a little bit about the, the School Resource Officer Program. So my question is, what steps should the city take to address this issue of racial justice and police reform?
All right. Thank you for that question. Let's start with Jake.
Thank you. This isn't just an Oshkosh problem or Wisconsin. It's a national problem of equality, how people are treated based off of how they look, not of how they act. And Oshkosh's police force is a great police force compared to others, but there's always room for improvement. There's always things we can do better. Things to work on. The way I look at a lot of it's social service issues, counselor issues, that we could add those into the police force. And when it's appropriate, a police officer is intervening. If it's something that is a domestic, nonviolent thing, maybe we need a social worker or a counselor to come in there. Their professions are different. A lot of times, violence has social issues involved, and one or the other may not be able to handle the situation. So at the school level, we're, we're talking with the school system about adding more community resource officers and more police in schools as partners and community members to get that established at a young age, to get people to be involved with their police force. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jake. Leteria.
I would say that we definitely need the police. I certainly would want them available if I needed to call them. However, for some of us, you have a concern of which officer is showing up, and I think that's a huge concern for a lot of us. Not everyone's good, not everyone's bad. I feel like we need additional training. We need to really have people be willing to tap into unconscious bias, whether they're, you know, doing that forwardly or just in the back of their mind. I think we all have that, that piece, and we have to dig into it and make sure that we're doing the right things. I also feel like police should be around more proactively than reactively so that we know them and we understand when they're coming around. I mean, that goes for schools as well. Are they only interacting with students when there's a reason? Or are they interacting to get to know them and show them that they're working collaboratively with them? Thank you.
Thank you for that answer. Courtney.
So I believe that the police officers should have full degrees. I know that it can't just start off like that, but continuous training and increased resources are really what's needed to help combat the issues that we have today. I feel like police officers have too much on their plate. I believe that they need their, they need help. And like Leteria said, if that means bringing in social workers, or I'm sorry, another candidate said it, but if that means bringing in social workers or other people that can mitigate the reactiveness rather than, you know, just helping out in the first place, I feel like that's more needed. Right now, I think it's a very difficult place to begin to start, but we need to work towards a more equal ground between police officers and citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Aaron?
Thank you. And there's, there's so many layers and so much that could be said about this. You know, when these, when all these tragedies happened and people were marching in the streets here in Oshkosh, I joined in there because, you know, I too would like to see some changes. And immediately after that, I set up a meeting with the county sheriff to go over their policies and just see, you know, what I'm referring to is that eight can't wait, and it was a set of policies and reforms that, you know, we want to see nationwide and every level. And we went through those and just saw, you know, well, what are you actually doing? And to my surprise, and, you know, I'm glad to see that a lot of those policies were already in place. And I don't know if that's the case for the city because they have their own, you know, departmental policies. So I'd like to see a full audit of our police law enforcement, not just the budget, but their policies and what they do to make sure that we're doing the best we can because, you know, just like them, we're here to serve the citizens. We're here to keep them safe. We're not here to hurt people, you know, who don't need to be hurt. I think this is a discussion that needs to continue to happen. I would also like to see a community, whether it's like an advisory board or some type of board that takes up these complaints and issues, but a lot more to be said on that.
Thank you, Aaron. Michael?
Thank you. So Oshkosh's budget compared to other cities is not too out of control for, for police budgets. I believe when I looked, it was somewhere around 23%. So I think obviously we should not be raising that budget. I don't see a need in that, but I also don't see a need in, in reducing it. I don't think that'll really get to the root of the issue. I would like to see some tangible things happen, like requiring unbi- or unconscious racial, racial bias training, making that mandatory. I would also like to see a community board that, like Aaron mentioned, that takes up these issues made up of people in the community that have not been in the police force or don't, do not have ties to the police force. I would like to see investigations in any instance where there is officer violence, whether that's shooting or, or otherwise, try to curb that use of force and get to the bottom of why that force was used. And I guess lastly, to, to try to be more proactive with this so that these issues don't come up in the future where police may be called. I would like to see more access to mental health services and the city to do more to work to end poverty so that we are, we're not being reactive, we're being proactive. So, thank you.
Thank you. Bill?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank the men and women of our, our Police Department here in Oshkosh. There's a lot going on across the country, and from my past experience with the Oshkosh Police Department, it, it, it's been excellent. They're overburdened with calls, thousands and thousands of calls. I, I, I know they need assistance, but I, I believe we're very fortunate and very lucky to have the police department that we have here. Certainly, mental health plays a big issue in what's going on. So I mean, I would certainly promote any type of mental health counseling that, that we could fund for them. It, it's, like I said, we don't have a lot of the, the issues here in Oshkosh that, that other cities have. And I, I think it goes to the professionalism of the police department, its leadership, and their training. I, I know they're constantly training, constantly working on mental health and other things, so thank you.
Thank you, Bill. And it goes to you, Phil.
I, I think that if a police officer is accused of police brutality, that the city should try to have an investigation by a former county deputies and, and former state police officers because those people are experts in how the, the police should do their jobs and and properly restrain suspects. But if they haven't worked for the city police department, then they'll be less likely to have favoritism toward the accused officer because they would probably know him. So they'd be very likely to get all the facts about what happened and, and be fair.
Okay, thank you. Now comes the time when I had promised you a, a few, a little bit of time, and you're going to have 30 seconds for this, by the way, for any kind of rebuttal, clarification from anything that you heard or said tonight, or anything else that you'd like to share. So 30 seconds apiece, and we'll start with you, Courtney.
I believe that Oshkosh is a great city, and I believe that any candidate that we have on the board today is a great candidate. We all know that Oshkosh deserves the best. We all know that everyone's voice needs to be heard, and we all agree to do our best to make those things happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Aaron?
Thank you. I'll just end with saying, we talked about a lot of important issues. I think the difference between, you know, who, some of the candidates or who we are as candidates and why I think I'm one of the more qualified candidates running is that, you know, it takes experience about the, having knowledge on these issues and, you know, having that experience and actually passing laws and resolutions. And I have that. I'm excited to get, you know, on these issues and start talking about them and get people involved in the process. So thank you for having me here.
You're welcome. Thank you for being here. Michael?
Thank you. Thank you again to the league and all the candidates. I thought this was very well done and got to learn a lot about the other candidates. And I hope everyone watching tonight saw that I'm willing to look at complex issues in different ways. I'm not afraid to make decisions and also stand by them. So generally, how I'll act on the council is inaction is not an answer to the many issues that we are facing. So it'll be one of my top priorities to be proactive, to make the city set up for success now and future generations. So please check out my website if you want to learn more about me or get in touch. It's beardlyforoshkosh.com. And again, I'm Michael Beardsley. Please vote for me on February 16th. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill?
Sorry, Margie, did you say Bill or Phil?
I said Bill.
Oh, thank you. Sorry about that. First of all, I'd like to thank all the candidates. I, I think we, we had some amazing conversations tonight. The city is going to be well-served regardless who sits on the council. Again, thanking the league and everybody else for their participation. In, in summary, I like to thank city council. My, my role is, is keep it simple. I, I'm here to keep your taxes as low as possible, pick up your garbage, give you clean drinking water, and give you police and fire protection. So in, in summary, that's, that's what I'm here to do. So again, thank you all. Greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, this time I'm saying Phil.
I thought, one other issue that's important to me. A few months ago, many residents got letters that said the street department will check sidewalks and see if they need to be replaced in the spring. If so, they expect the homeowner of, of that house to pay for it. Some people might not be able to afford to pay for it, and I think they, they should only have it replaced if, if someone wants to pay for it.
Okay, thank you, Phil. Jake?
Thank you. Again, I'd like to thank everybody for participating tonight and having this forum. I think over the last four years, I've learned a lot being in council, but I've learned that experience isn't everything. It's to have a heart and to look out for the people that need the help the most. There's plenty of people that can survive every day on their own, but it's the people that you're looking out for that are the under, underemployed, the poor. I think as a council, we're there for the social aspect as well. So I'll be that person for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Leteria, you get the final word.
I would say that one of the things that I think is great for Oshkosh is having a council. The more I listen to all of the candidates, it's amazing, all of the different things that we can bring. One of the things I think that I would bring is a love for Oshkosh and a true heart for people. I think also I'm a hard worker. I'm dedicated, and I'm willing to work tirelessly, and I will do that for my city. My name's Leteria Garrett, and I'd love to have your vote on February 16th. Thank you.
Thank you all very much for all the questions and all the answers. This concludes the forum for the Oshkosh City Council. On Tuesday, February 16th, you may vote for three of the council candidates. Michael Beardsley, Phil Collins, Leteria Garrett. Michael Beardsley, Phil Collins, Latiria Garrett, Courtney Hanson, Noah Hinrichs, Jake Crowsey, Bill Miller, Robert Wilcox and Erin Wojciechowski. The top six vote-getters will advance to the spring election where the next council will be decided. The polls are open from seven to eight, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. You may register when you go to vote on election day. If you do, take a proof of residence with you. We do hope that you're already registered, of course. Everyone must show a voter ID. Go to, go to myvote.wi.gov to find information on registration, ballot, acceptable photo IDs and polling places. Go to vote411.org to learn more about the candidates. You may also consider voting early or absentee. Please contact the city clerk for more information. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Winnebago County, I want to thank everyone for participating tonight. This is a lot of candidates and it's very good that you were able to do this with us. It lets everyone get to know you better. Special thanks to Oshkosh Media for all their help in making this first virtual forum happen. They're a wonderful team and we appreciate them. Remember, our democracy depends on citizen involvement. Please vote on February 16th.